Like to call this meeting of the Coventry zoning board to order. The fire exits are to your rear, the exits fine that's going to the building, so they're not considered fire exits. We have a roll call.
Absolutely. I'm gonna go in this order, because I'm gonna need a reminder. Member Ron Pelletier.
Yeah.
Member Ross Pelletier.
Yeah.
Member Ian Adi, Chairman Lockalade.
Here.
Member Cludier.
Here.
Member Doeig. And? Member Keith Galloway.
Here.
Thanks Keith.
I just call him Mr. Galloway. Okay.
The voting members?
The voting members are Lenny, Keith, myself, Eddie and Ross.
It's as a point, I think you guys do maintain this practice, but as a reminder, the alternates serve an important role. If there's something that's happening and then it gets continued, you might come back, so it's important to track it. But if you're here as an alternate, don't make a motion or make a second on a motion. Basically, you're here to observe the information and then you can act at a future meeting if someone else is missing. Does that all make sense, guys? Thanks.
I'm also gonna use individual. When we go to vote on something, it won't be all in favor, it's gonna be how do you vote type of thing. And that way it makes it easier, so it's on the record, we know exactly who is where and what. Make things a little bit easier. You all have a copy of the last ones, minutes, I'll say you.
I make a motion that we accept them.
Motion was made by Keith, seconded by Lenny, that we accept the, approve the minutes as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So voted. I didn't do, I said I was gone. Okay.
Only one.
Well, we're still with the way we said, Keith, how do you say?
I approve.
Lenny?
I approve.
Eddie?
I approve.
Ross? The Chair also approves. The Chair recognizes Attorney Cronin, would he like to come up to the podium?
Turned it on? I swear to me, I don't know.
I don't think you need to.
No testimony, alright.
Right now?
Great, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the owner and applicant Julie and Marjorie Bailey. This matter's been before the board for several months now, and after consideration, the clients have asked me to withdraw their application without prejudice.
Do we need a?
No motion needed, I believe that statement closes the matter formally.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read the next agenda item, Chair? The next agenda item of new business, owner applicant Jason Kerschmeyer. Location, Assessor's Platte 37, Lot 5, Two Barber Street. This, the applicant is seeking 10 feet of dimensional relief to construct a detached garage. The garage will be 25 feet in height where 15 feet is allowed. I believe Mr. Cronin may have some updates on the relief being requested, and I'll allow him to speak to it.
Mr. Chairman, Thomas Cronin, 1070 Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the owner and applicant Jason Kerschner.
You have to raise your hand.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth for others' board?
I do. So recently, I was advised that the notice in this matter was inadequate. Did not describe all the relief that is necessary for this project. Specifically, the proposed garage is greater than 1,200, the 1,200 square feet allowed under the new ordinance. It's about 1,512 square feet. So I'm asking for a continuance to next month, date certain, so that I may renotice the project and include that relief in the notice.
You're also gonna amend the application?
Yes.
You heard the rocks, we'll see you.
Just need a motion to.
That's what I'm asking for.
Make a motion to continue, next meeting is October 1st, correct?
That is correct, at 7:00 PM.
Make a motion we continue to October 1st, 7:00 PM, Council Chambers.
Ross has made the motion.
Second.
Eddie has seconded it. Lenny?
I approve the motion.
I approve.
Eddie?
Approve.
Chair also approves, motion approved.
Thank you, I'll amend and renotice as described, thank you.
Next matter is, for the, for the record, for any members of the public that may be here, the next matter on the agenda listed is for Hartzig, 655 Narrow Lane. This application was submitted, but is not actually under this board's jurisdiction. So this has been communicated to the applicant and attorney, this matter is not gonna be heard tonight. The next item on the agenda, owner applicant Christopher Elamas. Location, Assessor's Platte 57, Lot 4-48, this is at 48 Raymond's Point Road. The applicant is seeking a 48-foot dimensional variance to construct a new residential dwelling that will be 42 feet from the rear setback line where 90 feet is required.
Before we get going too far, you have a letter from the Covenant Association?
Yeah.
And do you have a lawyer?
I do not have a lawyer.
Every time somebody from your organization or from the condo association comes before us, they've been made to have a lawyer.
By the association?
I don't know if it's by the association or by this panel, but every time someone comes before us, we have a lawyer.
So we've been heard before for two people in the Hill Farm Camp condominiums, the coins.
We're not talking about Hill Farm, we're talking about Raymond's Point.
Okay.
That's the difference.
What's the difference?
I don't make the rules. Because you don't technically own your property, you own, everybody owns that whole organization from what I led to from.
Have the stamp final.
Which, which you will need, but you also have, you also have to have a lawyer.
Through the Chair, I just wanna give an informational update on this, because I also received. Well, it's very kind by Mr. Cronin, his services must be very affordable lately. But let me give this update, then I'll let the applicant, you know, make any discussions they have, or the board can ask me any questions. I did speak with a member of the Flat River Association, Wes Mori, today. And this was because I also received a call from another member of that association, also a former member of this board, informing me you may wanna be thoughtful of this rule. It is not the association that requires a lawyer, and Wes did make that clear. It would be the board's discretion. The board has had a practice in the past where you require or request a lawyer be present when a company or a business is being represented. That is a practice and a discretionary decision of the board as just a procedural matter. Similar to this, it's a procedure or discretionary question to the board. If you think a lawyer is necessary, the Flat River Association Board Member Representative said that they don't find it to be necessary. They have provided, you know, their review of the project, they have provided their approval. I know they're in receipt of a letter that may just be a few days old. So we haven't, we don't have a copy of that, but having spoken with the gentleman from the board, we understand that they don't see any concerns with this, with the way that the ownership is represented and the way that he can, that they don't have a concern with him presenting himself tonight without a lawyer. It does become the discretion of the board, if you wanna stick to past practice or not. If you have questions, you can certainly ask.
I defer to counsel, because this is the way we've done it in the past. If, if, if that's the reasoning behind it. I guess, in my mind, you could stretch it far enough to say that this was on business, but it's not like it's a. You know, it's not like, you know. A store is coming in, or they wanna build a church or something like that, or maybe the church, like, you know, Engineer Youngs wanted to come back into town again, they wanted to do something. What's your feelings on it, Council?
My feelings, I believe, and I can't speak for the board's thinking in the past, but I believe hearing the plan that this emanates from the concept in the courts, corporations or entities need to be represented by a lawyer, somebody can't come in there and say, I'm speaking for the corporation, it has to be an attorney. Now, slightly different, right? It's interesting that they have something from the entity, which would be your concern.
We've always, we've always asked for a letter from the Covenant.
No matter what, even with a lawyer?
They'd, well, because they're like an entity within the town, so to do stuff in Raymond's Point, you have to make sure that the Covenant Committee is okay with it.
Exactly. Just hold on one second, I just wanna see what they provided here.
You know, certainly it's not my, it's not my agenda to cause any problems with this, I'm just, this is what was brought to my attention, so I was, that's why I asked.
I mean, I'm, I gotta be, I'm satisfied that this entity, the Covenant Committee, has signed off on this application. So, I mean, I wouldn't ask.
He's not doing it on his own, somebody knows what he's.
He was in here by himself, we'd have a different discussion. Your concern about making sure he's not speaking for the Covenant Committee that might object to this variance is being satisfied by that.
I, I really have no problem with going along with that.
I, I, I think there are times when we might, this isn't setting a precedent, there are times when you might not be satisfied, but I think based upon that letter, I, I don't want to be satisfied, but I would be satisfied. I can't see making them or hiring an attorney. Yeah, that would be.
Lenny? You're good?
It's all gonna be given to the.
Oh, definitely gonna have, we have to have a copy.
Yeah.
Well, they have to have one, but I'm sure.
Satisfied, Mr. Chairman, under these circumstances, based upon that letter, I would let the applicant proceed. Something comes up during the hearing that we all sudden have some discomfort, then we'll act accordingly.
Mr. Rockwell?
Don Rockwell, 46 South Main Street, Coventry, Rhode Island, representing Christopher Eloma at 48. Lot River.
Raymond's Point.
I mean, Raymond's Point Road, rather. This project involves the demolition.
Chris Mollie also. Raise your, raise your right hand. Make it legal. Tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth for the sport, state your name and address, please.
Chris Mollie, 138 Rothman.
Okay, Mr. Rockwell.
So this, this project involves the demolition of an existing dwelling at 48 Raymond's Point Road and the construction of a new dwelling. Freshwater Wetlands application has been submitted and approved. And. What, what they're, what he is seeking is relief on the rear setback, because the rear setback in this case is the edge of Johnson's Pond. Unique feature about this property is that it only has 139 feet of depth from the road to the Flat River Reservoir. Existing house and deck is 54 feet from the pond, which is the rear setback. Reposed house will be 59 feet, and the deck will be at 48 feet at minimum. Required setback is 90, so the relief sought is 31 for the house and 42 for the deck.
Questions, gentlemen? What are you cutting dry?
I don't have any questions.
You're gonna, you're gonna tear down the old house, put up a new one? You're already tied into the septic system, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not changing.
And we're not changing the number of bedrooms, or are we?
Same.
And? And, how many baths?
It's two baths.
Okay.
Seems a lot similar to what we've been, we heard last month for the two on Hill Farm Camp.
I got one more.
Anybody, you guys wanna take a seat? In the front would be fun.
Chair, could we just clarify that the, the relief, the setback is actually gonna be increased because of Eloma? I hear you say it was 54 and now.
Case of the deck, in the case of the deck, it will be, it will be less.
The deck right now is 54 feet.
Right.
Back, it's gonna be 48. 59.
Yeah.
Now?
54 now.
It's gonna be 59.
So you're giving on one, and it's kind of a wash. Does anybody in the crowd have any questions, like to say anything about this one way or the other? Anybody online?
Through the Chair, if you don't mind, before you make the motion, can I just ask that this letter that was just submitted to staff tonight, which is an updated letter from their association, providing their written approval of the application, can we have this acknowledged as exhibit one for the matter, just to make sure the record is complete?
That would, that'd be fine, I, actually, I'd, I'd like to have a copy of that.
Please, yeah.
Make a motion, we make the letter from the condo association as exhibit one.
Second.
Motion made by Ross, seconded by Eddie, that we introduce this letter from, I'm gonna see if this, Covenant Committee, I just wanted to make sure I had it right. Flat River Road Covenant Association, alright. Be accepted as exhibit number one, all in favor? No, sorry. Sorry.
Approve.
Eddie? Keith?
Approve.
Lenny?
Approve.
Chair also approves. Okay.
I make a motion that we vote on this tonight?
Second.
Motion was made by Keith, seconded by Lenny, that we vote on this tonight.
Approve.
Eddie? Approve. Lenny?
Approve.
Keith? Approve. Chair also. Now we'll take a roll. Lenny?
Can we get a motion to, to approve the project?
That's what we're doing.
Incorporate the, should be incorporate the.
Disturbations?
Make a motion, we approve this project with the, taking into consideration the staff report and the letter received from the Covenant.
Second.
Motion was made by Ross, seconded by Lenny, that we approve this application as presented, along with staff report and the letter from the Covenant Committee. Lenny, how do you, how do you say?
Approve.
Keith? Eddie? Ross?
Approve.
Chair also approves.
So, that also weighs the.
We weren't gonna talk about that anymore.
Okay. Correct.
That is correct.
I just didn't wanna hold them up.
If, if, if any of the members get into a decision you feel is so complex, you'd like to see a written version of the decision before you vote on it, then you just suggest this matter, we wish to have a ratification, we're gonna vote, but we're gonna ratify the decision the next month. Most of our decisions are straightforward enough.
Next on the agenda?
Next on the agenda is applicant Christopher and Patricia Nenager. This is at Assessor's Platte 33, Lot 6.13-31, at 31 Hill Farm Camp. The applicant is seeking a 40-foot dimensional variance to construct a new residential dwelling that will be 50 feet from the rear setback line, where 90 is required.
You're already under oath. Are you gonna speak? It's raised right here, I swear you're in anyways. State your name? Address? You swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth from this board? Mr. Rockwell?
Thank you. So this project involves the demolition of an existing dwelling that actually was completed in, demolition was completed in 2024, at 31 Hill Farm Camp Road, and the construction of a new dwelling and the alteration of an onsite wastewater treatment system. Freshwater Wetland application and outs application have been submitted and approved by Rhode Island DEM. In this case, it's also a relief that we're asking for. This property only has 154 feet of depth from the road to Flat River Reservoir. The former dwelling was 35 feet from the pond, which is the rear setback, and the proposed house will be 50 feet at a minimum. Required setback is 90, so the relief sought is 40 feet.
That's all you're looking for? Well, I mean, any improvements down there would be greatly accepted, for sure. Anybody in the audience have, like to speak on this? What say you, gentlemen?
Make, make a motion, we vote on this tonight?
Ross made the motion to vote on this tonight, Eddie seconded it. Take a vote, Ross?
Approve.
Eddie?
Approve. Approve.
Chair also approves. Okay. Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, that we vote on this tonight, now we're gonna vote on this tonight, so. Staff report, that's all.
I make a motion that we include the staff report in our decision tonight?
Oh, just fair, for the record, I think, when you vote to make a motion tonight, you're just saying you're gonna vote on it. So when you make the next motion, just indicate your, your, your motion is to approve the project. Reference the staff report, so that makes it clear that this motion is to approve the project.
Can you do your motion again, please?
I, I approve, and I make a motion that we include the staff report in our decision.
Seconded.
Motion was made by Keith, seconded by Lenny, that we approve this project as presented with the staff report.
Approve.
Eddie? Keith?
I approve.
Lenny?
Approve.
Chair also approves. Application has been approved, good luck.
Mr. Chair, that does conclude all the matters of business for us tonight.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Ross, seconded by Keith, that the meeting be adjourned, all in favor? This one I'm gonna take as a regular vote.